The tee time is just the start. Tee time is 4:50.
4:50, yeah.
How much to actually tee off?
Um, I'll tell you what.
That's like when they call those at the, uh...
Hello?
It's like New Yankee Stadium.
Um, hi. Welcome to our March 6, 2023 City Council Workshop and Meeting. First on the agenda, I'm going to turn over the City Manager for Budget and CIP Schedule Review.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In your packet was the tentative schedule that we have laid out to review the FY24 budget. As you see in the document, tonight is just to review this schedule. According to ordinance, the CIP plan is shared with the Planning Board annually. So Assistant City Manager Brian Wood will be presenting that at their March 14 meeting for feedback before it comes back to you, which will be the presentation on March 20. Also on March 20 will be the presentation from the Superintendent and the School Committee on where they are currently with their FY24 budget. I think the Mayor will be talking about the school's budget and schedule during his Mayor's Report during the council meeting. By charter, the CIP has to be presented to the City Council by March 30, so we'll do that on the 20th, so we'll meet that deadline of the charter. April 3 will be the preliminary budget discussion. I'll be really talking about, that's really where I'll be reviewing the budget message with you, talking about the drivers within this budget, what we're faced with this fiscal year. And then we'll also be talking about the FY24 CIP, which will be separate from the plan. And I'll keep reiterating that as we go through because there'll be a time when you're actually adopting the plan, but it's not what you're actually going to be bonding. That won't be done until you do the budget at the end of May. The, just a reminder, the April 17 is a holiday, so that meeting is canceled. So we will meet on April 18, which will be the Tuesday following the holiday. That's where I'll present the City Manager's final budget. So that's by, again, by charter, that has to be presented to you by the, by April 30, so I'll present it on the 18, and that will be the final manager's budget. Then from there, it'll be you as councilors working through the budget, discussing what you'd like to see in changes. Those changes won't take place until you actually begin the public hearing and first reading of the budget. So you'll need to think about what amendments you'll be making to the budget, and you'll present that then. Talking with the Mayor, it was, we discussed having a special workshop for the budget. So instead of having your quarterly retreat that we had discussed having, you'll have that workshop on April 24, and it'll just be about budget. That'll be an opportunity. Nothing else will be on the schedule for that. It'll just be a workshop for you to discuss. No motions, you won't be taking any action, it'll just be for you to discuss the budget. Your first meeting to make those amendments will be on May 1, and then the second meeting, and that's to adopt the first reading on the appropriation resolve and the CIP bonding for the FY24 CIP. And then the second meeting in May, which will be May 15, will be to adopt the school budget, so that you'll know what the school budget is prior to that, but that'll be to adopt the school budget. And then the second reading on appropriation resolve and the CIP bonding. So that is our budget schedules. Are questions? Anything that you'd like to see that's not there that we can have a discussion about? All right. Mayor, we're all set. So staff-wise, we're, we're already working through the budget. The Finance Director has the preliminary draft of where I'm at with the budget she'll be working through, through that now, and we'll have, we'll have the documents ready. The portal that we did last year on the budget will be available again this year, so anyone in the community can go on. That portal is through Munis, you'll be able to take a look at the budget once, once I present it to you on April 18. So shortly thereafter, probably that following day, we'll have that portal switched turned on, you'll be able to access the budget right through the portal. So, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to Mr. Jonathan Labonte. We're going to talk about CSX Quiet Zone, railroads, quiet zone crossings.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I provided a brief memo to you folks, as well as some supporting documents from the Federal Railroad Administration as it relates to establishing quiet zones along rail corridors. Quiet zones are probably better described as reduced horn, since there are incidents where a train may still need to, for emergency purposes, use its horn. Some of you have been in office for a few years. There was previous discussion with the Council requesting quiet zones, a quiet zone designation in the downtown area. One of the challenges at that time was that the crossings that existed in the downtown, some of them did not have the minimum equipment necessary to conduct the federal risk assessment that would need to be done as part of evaluating quiet zones. There is a pending project with CSX, the company that purchased Pan Am, to make significant investments actually along the entire corridor from Yarmouth up to Mattawamke. It was originally a Yarmouth to Waterville project that would actually improve all of the crossings through Auburn. So there's a good opportunity to evaluate pursuit of quiet zones because that investment is coming. Related to that, as I highlighted in the memo, quiet zones are not eligible for federal or state funding, since they require supplemental safety features that go beyond what FRA would expect if you want to be able to have reduced horn. So that typically, that, that cost would fall on the municipality. In conversations with towns that have recently implemented these, those can range from, and again, this is a couple of years old now, with construction inflation, the number could be higher, between 125 and maybe up to $150,000 per crossing. One of the opportunities, as I highlighted in the memo, to improve likelihood of achieving quiet zone is to evaluate the existing crossings of the CSX corridor, existing street crossings, and whether or not some closure of crossings, especially those that would have a reasonable alternative route. The way the FRA scores in their calculator, safety requirements relates to proximity of crossings along, along the route. As I've suggested, and staff have had internal discussions, we think it would be worth pursuing a discussion with CSX on the quiet, establishing a quiet zone and evaluating the potential to close the crossing at Black Cat Road, Library Avenue, and Spring Street. There are some other funding opportunities, if we were looking at some of those closures, that could support some streetscape and other improvements, in particular in the downtown, but perhaps also along Old Danville Road to Moose Brook Road, which would be the, the alternative route, if you will. So we do see opportunities to pursue other non-local dollars to improve the surrounding streets and streetscapes if we were to evaluate that. Any potential street closure, even to establish quiet zones, requires other public process. If there were to be closures, there would have to be public hearings, so this is really the first step. We had some internal discussion implications with PW for winter maintenance, implications for access to, say, the Auburn Public Library, parking, how do you navigate those? We've identified improvements that we could evaluate as part of that, but before we proceed, working with CSX, DOT, and the Federal Railroad Administration on what a package could look like, we wanted to bring this to the Mayor and Council for feedback, thoughts, suggestions, and further direction.
Just a practical standpoint, too. There's been, as Mr. Labonte said, there's been developers who, you know, said that they would develop land around downtown Auburn, but it's too expensive. I'll give you one example. You remember this Troy Street, Rick. They had to use airport-quality glazing windows on Troy Street because of the noise from the railroad crossing. Extremely expensive. So this would be a way to actually spur up cost-effective development within or in close proximity to those railroad tracks or crossings.
Question, comment? You guys good to go? Are we going to nod and give Jonathan the ability to go and move forward with this? Yeah? I see no objections. I think this is well past due. I think the residents of Danville and downtown Auburn would be very, very grateful.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll need to stop being so well-prepared, or else we won't have any questions, and we'll go by too quick. Next on the agenda, spring cleanup. Dennis Toite.
I'm Dennis Toite, Public Works Director. Just wanted to provide an update from our last spring cleanup conversation. There were a number of questions around the costs and some of the impacts on our department when we performed this. So what we have here is 2021 spring cleanup figures. Our disposal costs in 2021 were forty-nine, just over $49,000. We have to rent, rent a couple pieces of equipment in order to perform spring cleanup. We don't have all the proper equipment, so that came to a tune of about thirteen, a little over $13,000. Fuel costs are just shy of $5,000 in 2021. Expect that that would be higher with the, the increase in costs now. Our labor costs, and this is, again, already budgeted, but this is the cost that it takes for us to put all of our resources towards that two- or three-week timeframe. Looking at our impacts, you know, from a staffing resource standpoint, we, we took a 10-year picture of workers' comp injuries related specifically to spring cleanup. We average about two injuries per spring cleanup over, for a total of about eight injuries over that 10-year period. Right now, and I think this is a, you know, again, that was about a $338,975 impact just from workers' comp injuries from, related to spring cleanup. We currently have six vacant positions. Obviously, if we have injuries that put individuals either at a reduced capacity or even out of work, this just furthers that impact on our vacancies or our reduced staffing, I guess you could say. In terms of impacts overall, if we're putting all of our resources, this is essentially, we have already put a planning process together where we have identified, these, these are the activities we expect to be accomplishing during that, that month of May in particular. Obviously, everything goes towards this for two, three weeks. Our parks cleanup, everything's growing, our grass is growing, everything, people, folks are trying to get out and use our, our resources out there. We need to get these areas cleaned up. Otherwise, they don't look good, and people are not going to use them, and certainly complaints will come. Memorial Day is a, is a very big undertaking for us. All of our cemeteries need to be ready, they need to be prepared, they need to have flags placed, American flags for all of our veterans. This is not a light undertaking. It takes a lot of our resources to make that happen, and so losing two to three weeks of dedicated to spring cleanup, if we do that for the first two to three weeks of May, we literally have a week to get ready for Memorial Day, and we have 19 cemeteries in this city. So it's, it's not an easy taking, undertaking for that. You know, you could go through each one. I mean, obviously, these are routine tasks that just get delayed. I mean, catch basin cleaning, street sweeping, all those just have an impact, and we're just further down the line getting that done. I think the, the one I want to highlight is we, we're excited about this new event, but May 6, we have an event coming to the city where we're a signature event, we expect people to come and visit. The city, if we put curbside collection out there, it's not going to look good on May 6. There's going to be things everywhere. Not to mention, our staff is obviously dedicated to spring cleanup. We have to prepare for sprint, for this event as well, and getting the setup and making sure that that's been successful. So it's just a lot of demand on our staff, and again, a lot of delay to what we can do. We just can't be in two places at once. So there's only so much our staff can accomplish when we're, when we're dedicated like that. And this is just a reminder of what we, we're proposing is, you know, April 1. We would be allowing, as opposed to a curbside collection, allowing residents to bring their bulky waste items year-round, free of charge. There's no cost at this point. We'll certainly evaluate and track this, be able to bring it back to the Council for consideration if we feel that there are additional restrictions or, you know, a cost-associated permits, those kinds of things. There's all kinds of options that I think could be presented if, if we felt that that's what we needed to do. Our, our view of this was to, to really, we hear the Council loud and clear, some of our discussion last time is the concern of folks having to hold on, you know, from a safety standpoint, holding on to this material for two years because that's the only time they can get it out. We're telling you, that's, that's gone. They can bring it anytime, and anytime the main waste energy is, is open, they'll be able to bring it there free of charge and get it out of their home instead of holding on to it for a couple of years until the next spring cleanup. So at that, I will open up to questions.
Before we do, Mayor, just one final thing. You know, I think that what we're looking for here is at least initial run. Let's see what this looks like, let's see what the usage, how many people are actually taking advantage of it. One thing that I think we also see, I did follow up with, Councilor Staples isn't, isn't here tonight, but this was something that he talked about at the last meeting, so I did follow up with him. You know, this is something that could be just a trial run this year to see what it looks like, especially not knowing what the impacts will be for our staffing. But also, one thing that we find during the spring cleanup, a lot of times people bring out materials that they could put out in their everyday, everyday waste, can go out, but the problem is they don't, they stack it to where spring cleanup is. So we really think that a large portion of what's being put out there, if we take a look at it, could just be sorted out in our normal waste pickup. And, and people, hopefully, if they, but when you're in that cleaning mode, right? I know I do it when we have spring cleanup. You're in the cleaning mode. You're going through, and you're like, all right, I'm going to clean out that shed, I'm going to take everything out of that shed, and it's spring cleanup, so I'll put it all on the curbside. Well, a lot of that could have just gone out in my regular waste pickup, but we choose to just do that whole cleanup at the same time. So in doing this, hopefully, some of that material will still go in to everyday weekly waste cleanup, and then those items that they need to bring to main waste energy could take place. And then, as we mentioned before, you know, if, if somebody is certainly in a difficult position and can't make that, we're going to, we're working on how we'll be able to take, take staff and be able to allocate those resources when necessary. So, so that's my thought. Not permanently, but let's at least see what one year does.
And before we open up to some questions, too, I, I talked to Phil last week about this, and I want to thank you, Phil, for putting together a comparison. My question was, I'd like to know what other municipalities do with regards to bulky waste cleanup, and Dennis, you pulled, I don't know if you have that memo. It's also in your packet. We pulled, what, four like-sized communities, Portland, South Portland, Lewiston, and Bangor, none of which do curbside collection, and the majority of them kind of do a take off of what Dennis is proposing right now, except they actually charge their residents at the collection points, their version of MWA, and I think we can bring that up, just so everybody can see it. So I was looking at that, and you know, there's a lot of, even Lewiston, next door, they really have a different type of program, that's right there. But so I think we're, I think we're comparable, actually, I think we're better than comparable to a lot of municipalities that are our size throughout the state. I mean, we're really offering a great vantage point. Now, I do want to bring up something, you know, post-workshop that we talked about. If there's someone that's truly in financial need, and logistically they can't get rid of their bulky waste, and they have bulky waste, there is a program. Do you have money allotted to go ahead and do a special pickup on a case-by-case or need-based basis?
Yes. We, we've, we've worked with contractors that may be able to assist, but yes, we, what we'll do is assess those hardships, those cases, and, and try to find the best solution to help them get the, get their material out.
Second question, I'll follow up on that one. If more money is required, needed for that program, I'm wondering, don't have to have the answer, but if we can set aside several thousand dollars in ARPA money in order to help subsidize that, especially for our low-to-moderate-income households that don't have the transportation and get those bulky waste out, I think it's something worth looking at, and what potentially that could be if the Council's in agreement with that one. Any other questions? I just want to make sure this is up on the screen for you all.
Just a comment. I was looking at that workers' comp number, which is high, and then it occurred to me that maybe that doesn't even count the effect on the experience rating. So in other words, you've got a compounding effect on what you're paying, you know, for the workers' comp because of the lost experience.
Or the lost productivity of that person?
Absolutely.
Dennis, I still would like to know, how are we going to figure out everybody that's coming in and weighing up or whatever? What is the process?
So what we, what we're proposing is, is a no-tracking system at this point. They have the ability, we have worked with Main to Waste, that we have a few options in terms of giving individual permits, more or less, I mean, I, unique identifying numbers for residents. They'd be able to actually track at some point the actual amount that a resident brings. We, we felt that, as City Manager Cole mentioned, was an evaluation period, really evaluating and seeing and working with Main to Waste in terms of, you know, tracking abuse, if there are issues, tracking the total amount and being able to report back. And I think as we work through that, we'll be able to prevent those, present those options. I think if we're seeing either abuse or challenges or maybe not enough frequency, all kinds of options, we'll, we'll bring those forward in terms of what we could do to, to correct that or tighten that up.
So I would guess that if I was one of these nice people that ran around to all the neighbors and said, I'll haul for you, you'll have a number so you'll know exactly how many times he's going in and out with Auburn?
At, at this point, all they would actually have to do is provide the same proof they do right now. If they bring their household, they just have to prove that they're an Auburn resident. So at this point, there wouldn't be much restriction for someone to be able to help out and, and do what you're saying, as long as they're an Auburn resident and can prove that.
If we worked with the hauler, then we would give that hauler a special permit to be able to go over there, if it was coordinated through the city.
Correct.
If somebody just went on their own and had somebody do that, then they would need to make sure they're showing proof that they are a resident.
Yeah, thank you. What, we worked with Main Waste on the contractor piece, and that we would, we would be identifying who that contractor is and who they're hauling for, so Main, Main to Waste would be able to track that. So it would be coordinated through us. Sorry, I may have misunderstood.
The other thing is, is I would hope we would go a two-year program because this year, there'll be a ton of stuff that's going to be delivered somehow. Next year, hopefully, it would be totally different because we wouldn't have two years sitting at somebody's house.
Yeah, I think that if, if we're seeing that, you know, we'll, we'll continue evaluating the numbers. If the costs are somewhere different than where we're anticipating, we'll come back before the Council and, and for you to take action on that.
I think Councilor Walker brings up a point, I just want to, I mean, there's a definitely potential for cottage industry where, you know, hey, listen, I'm going to charge my neighbor 25 bucks to take her stuff away. Okay, she lives in Auburn, that's awesome. Okay, I get it, that's, that's a big helping hand. But I might charge $50 for my friend in Poland and take his trash. I mean, if there's any type of mechanism in place that we can flag people that visit MWA more than four times in a month, and that might not be the right time. And then do a self-identification of local haulers, you know, that cottage industry, if you would. I just think, I think to your point, I think you were talking a little bit about that. That way you can kind of guarantee we don't have waste fraud and abuse. Any other questions, comments, suggestions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've talked with quite a few people. Half of them are okay because they've got vehicles and they can cart it off. Another portion of them said they wish they had known that we had tried to do this maybe next year when it's the off year, and they, like you said, you're going to try to find a way to find a way to get rid of their stuff if they can't find somebody to take it along with their stuff. And then I've also got another fraction that says they pay high taxes, and this is one of the, one of the projects they enjoy, and they see a return on their dollar for their taxes to have their stuff taken away.
So we have to have some sort of remedy to this. Phil, what do you recommend on this one? I mean, I think it's a little bit past a whip count.
So yeah, I think that from what we're hearing, this wasn't, this wasn't any order that's coming before you. It was just, this is an administrative action that we're moving forward with. I'm not hearing any, you know, strong objections, so we'll proceed with, with implementing this as a temporary project. We'll continue monitoring it. And nothing says that if we are looking at this and something's not working, and, and we turn around and say, you know what, we didn't see the response that we had hoped to receive, and Council, we think that we need to do this in the fall. And, and the fall will do it. Sometimes it's almost, you know, if we ever were to come back to this, I really think fall would be the better time anyway, because a lot of times we're, we're, you know, if we have any late storms, anything else, the team is still just still working through some of that winter, winter issues that we deal with, especially when it comes to getting all of our street sweeping done, so we're meeting our stormwater separation requirements, all those things. So, but we can take a look at this. We'll evaluate it, we'll continue evaluating. If we need to shift and pivot this by fall, then we will.
Counselor Mox?
What's the plan for alerting the citizens?
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do a full, full notification, we'll, we'll probably work with, much like we do with, just before we do spring cleanup, so people know what to put out. We clearly do not want people to just say, oh, it's the second year, I'll just start hauling out the 1st of May without getting that information. So we'll, we'll be sure to start doing with notifications and engagement, so.
And I also like to see, I mean, looking at this list, if we can put pothole repair at the top, she's coming. I know, I just wrote a check for a new suspension on a vehicle, and my wife identified the exact pothole, and I'll tell you offline. So it's getting bad, and again, this frees the cycles that we've been experiencing the last three years. I mean, this is, this climate cycle has changed even since I became Mayor, so it's definitely new and it's definitely causing some issues. So I'd love to see that on number one. I don't know if any counselor wants to add in on that one? Is there something that's more important than potholes on this list?
The list wasn't in priority order.
Yeah. Thanks. Okay, I think we're good.
Yeah, all right. Good, thank you.
Oh, next, Karen Skamen. We're going to talk about assessing market rate adjustments for multifamily units. And Joe St. Peter?
I was going to sit over there.
No, you've got that.
Okay, thank you. All right. Good evening. Hi, Mayor Levesque, members of the Council. Joe and I are here tonight. I'm the, I'm Karen Skamen, City Assessor, here with Joe St. Peter, Deputy Assessor. And tonight, we have a presentation to provide you information on our proposed market adjustments to the multifamily units in the city. You're all aware that market sales that we've seen over the last couple of years have increased substantially, the values that homes are selling for. And so it's our goal to assess these properties fairly equitably and according to market value or just value. You also, I am sure, are aware that we are not assessing at market value, we are assessing far below market value at this point in time. Joe's going to show you in the presentation some information to that point, and also some, with these proposed adjustments that we are considering and will most likely occur, along with the adjustments that we made in the past couple of years, the Taylor Pond adjustments, the single-family home adjustments, even though we are not adjusting at market value, we are striving and trying to do our best to treat all of our taxpayers fairly and equally, and have them pay their fair share of taxes for the different classes of properties. So with that, Joe has some very interesting information to present. So, with that, Joe has some very interesting information to present, and we'll begin.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, councilors, thank you for having us. Just, I, okay, sure. Just to kind of recap on sales ratios, when a sale and the, when a property sells and the assessed value is equal, that gives us a ratio of one or 100%. If the sale is higher than the assessed value, then the ratio is lower, just for some context here. And you heard us talk a lot about that last year, so I'm not going to get too much into it. But just to look at some trends of what's been happening, since 2018, we've seen a steady drop in the state-determined ratio for the city of Auburn. And that's an aggregate number. It includes sales of all classes of properties, be they commercial, industrial, or residential. Of course, we have more residential properties than anything, and those are the ones that have been seeing the largest sale prices increases over the years. When we're at 100%, there isn't a whole lot to worry about. We're right where we need to be. But when the rates, when the ratios start dropping, then we have to make decisions on how we either assess those properties, reassess those properties, or what we do to the ratio. So, you can see since 2018, you know, we were pretty close to 100%. That ratio has been dropping steadily. When the state evaluates sales to determine what the ratio is for any given years, they're behind. And you can see on my chart that in 2023, the sales that they evaluated to determine our ratio was in 2000, were sales from 2020 and 2021. And as of yesterday, we did not know what that ratio was going to be. We expected it might be 73% with the state-determined ratio. And as of 1 o'clock today, we have confirmation. The state sent us the ratio. So, the ratio determined by the state for the city of Auburn for 2023 is 73%. That's pretty low. The good news is that when they did their evaluation, they didn't have our adjusted numbers from 2022, and they won't have our numbers for any market adjustments that we make going forward. So, we can mitigate that somewhat. So, it's not as bad as it seems. In fact, once we redo our numbers and talk to the state, we should be in pretty good shape. But it is dropping, and it has dropped, so we have to talk about what we do about that. So, here's just a bar chart of the same numbers, just kind of showing that steady decline. And of course, in 2023, that number is, without any kind of adjustment, at 73%. But this is kind of really the ratio trend that we want to talk about today. We're here to talk about what's been happening to sales of residential properties and in particular, multifamily properties. And multifamily sales have been pretty hot. We've seen a lot of sales. We've seen a low inventory of sales, which kind of increases the prices, we believe. And this is kind of the trend. We track both multifamily 2 and 4 units and multifamilies 5 and graders, just for the purposes of our analysis. We might end up aggregating those in the future, but we can see that the trends are doing pretty much the same thing, just a little bit differently. So, in 2022, based on sales through November, the ratio for multifamily sales, 2 to 4 units, is about 60% or 0.6. The single-family sales are at 68%, although there's something really important to remember about that ratio, is that last year, we adjusted properties. Had we not done that, those market adjustments to the single-family properties, the ratio would be closer to, it would be, 53%, which is pretty low. So, what we did in 2022 had a moderating effect on that ratio for this year, for this coming year. So, that's, you know, that was the intended consequence. It didn't bring us to full market value, but we didn't expect it to, because that would have been quite a shock. But the other difference is that when we adjusted those single-family properties, it created a ratio of 0.68%. The multifamilies now have a greater disparity the other way around. So, you can see that in 2021, we had a comfortable cushion between the single families and the multifamilies. We considered adjusting multifamilies in 2021, or last year, in 2022, but we didn't because that spread was great and, you know, we're not inclined to adjust things if we don't have to, so we left them alone. But since then, multifamily sales have taken off, and we have kind of an inverse gap. So, in interest of fairness to single-family property owners, we believe that an adjustment to multifamily units is likely, and that's something we have to do. Although, we're still evaluating sales, and we do so every year through to April 1st of every given year. And just to give you some examples of what's going on in the multifamily market, as of last week, I pulled the five most recent sales of multifamily properties. And you can see those ratios are quite low, which means the sale prices are quite high. So, we have, you know, an assessed value of 205, a sale price of 360. That's a big swing. So, we believe that corrections are necessary. So, what properties might be affected? Well, in 2022, we adjusted the single-family properties, and we don't anticipate adjusting them this year. So, that was 6,000 parcels that were affected in that adjustment. The scope is considerably smaller this time around, so we have in multifamily 2 to 4 units, we have 1,052 total units, and then 5 and graders, even smaller, only 152. And we will continue to evaluate all properties, not just the ones we're looking at here, right up until we commit. But at this time, it looks like multifamily properties may need a market adjustment. What are we striving for? Well, we're striving for equity amongst property classes. Ideally, everything is assessed at 100% of market value. That's tricky, and I don't know if it's ever completely achievable, but that is always the goal of assessing, is to have that fairness in assessing so that one class of property isn't paying more than their fair share of taxes, or someone else is paying less than their fair share. So, the goal is that everything's at market value. And when these properties aren't in balance, we may have to adjust either the ratio, assessed values, and in some circumstances, both. So, generally, we have some choices when it comes to, when the assessed value and market value are not equal. One kind of, one option is lowering the ratio. And the plus on that side is that we may not have adjustments to make, adjustments to value, but there's a chance that we're going to decrease the mill rate as a result because we're leaving things off the table, where we lose taxable valuation base because we have to ratio certain assessments. It may make those market adjustments more extreme the following year. And I, and case in point, that single-family was, is that 68%? It would have been 53%. So, we stove off a more extreme adjustment potentially this year. It doesn't correct equity issues. It just sort of kind of kicks them to the curb, and we lose value and exemption. The other choice is we can make market adjustments. This does correct equity between classes. It may decrease or hold the mill rate, assuming a flat budget and maybe other factors like reimbursement from the state. It could moderate those future market adjustments, prevent us from falling off a cliff, and particularly in this really volatile market, where we've seen a kind of unprecedented property hikes. We preserve those exemptions. We can maintain a certified ratio, and we don't lose value on new types of assessments in personal property. And just for an example, our total personal property assessments are at full value, this includes the Betty personal property and taxable personal property, was $348 million. When we ratioed at 93%, we lost $24 million. If we drop our ratio to 90%, we're going to, that's going to increase by another $10 million, and we lose $34 million in valuation on the personal property side. So, there are consequences for lowering the ratio. So, again, the goal is always to be at 100%. Sometimes we have to do both, though, particularly when we have made market adjustments and the, you know, we don't want to make adjustments on adjustments on adjustments. So, we may have to both adjust the ratio and market adjustments until we can fully equalize property value. That's really the only way to kind of get out of this cycle. So, what's our plan? Well, we're going to continue to evaluate sale prices and ratio tends for real estate through April 1, 2023. Why April 1? That's the state assessment date, so that's when we're looking at sales for this particular period. We're going to talk to multifamily property owners that we are considering market adjustments. We're probably going to send out notices in the mail and probably other ways as well. If there's anything we learned last year, is we need to give as much notice and as soon as possible to taxpayers. That was probably chief among complaints that we had from people, and we have listened. We're going to hold public meetings and meetings with individual taxpayers as needed. And we're going to make a final decision on market adjustments sometime before commitment. Again, as we wrap up our analyses of sales through to April 1st, and, you know, how much, how far we need to go with those adjustments. I don't anticipate it'll be as high as the single-family adjustments we made last time, but again, we're constantly evaluating it. And that's where we're at.
Just a couple of clarifying questions, if I could, so that we're all clear. When you're talking about mill rates and this adjustment on multifamily, let's say it goes up in valuation 8% as you're potentially forecasting, and the budget was flat, stayed the same, this would shift the tax burden slightly from single-family homeowners towards multifamily units?
Yes, and although I think a more apt way to put it is that it would equalize those. So, last year, when the single-family properties had adjustments to them, their valuations went up. Other classes of properties throughout the city, their taxes actually went down because we didn't change their assessment, but the mill rate went down. So, the net effect was their taxes went down. So, last year, multifamily owners, their taxes actually went down, and there were, and we got a lot of comments about that from people. So, this, again, it goes back to fairness, getting their assessment right and, or as right as possible, and in interest of fairness, so.
And this is not a criticism of taxes, your department, but in the reality is, those of us who've been in the multifamily ownership, or real estate business over time, you know when someone's taxes go down, it increases their net gain, their EBITDA. And then when you're selling a 73-unit property in Auburn for substantial, it dramatically maximizes their profitability, the sellers. So, that's where I think we've seen a lot of growth. This is all cause and effect. I will say, we'll have some questions too, but as we're going through this, let's remember that landlords don't absorb all increases in cost. This will be passed on to the tenants in the form of increase in rents. And I guarantee you, though, I was really shocked about seeing the 73-unit parcel that went up for sale. That's off Center Street, if I remember correctly, off North River Road, Center Street. Yeah, I know that project. So, if that got sold for that much, you're, those individuals are going to see dramatic rent increases, akin to some other rent increases we've seen before. This all goes back to supply and demand, not enough supply for the demand. Prices go up, rents are going to go up. Taxes go up, rents are going to go up. So, is there any questions for Joe and Karen? I think this stimulates a really big policy discussion on our end, and again, doing what we're doing, but.
Thank you. Could you talk about the 73% state ratio? I'm kind of, get a little lost in the, trying to connect what we do to what the state does.
So, every year, we provide the state with a ratio, with our sales ratio. They actually send it to us. It has all the sales that occur in a period of time, over a year period. We go through them, we look at them, we determine ratios for each one of the sales. It goes back to the state. They have a formula that they use, and again, like Joe said, that includes single-family, multifamily, all the sales that occur. They develop an overall ratio for the city from all of those sales. Now, this shows you that the developed ratio, the developed parcel ratio is what they call it, that we receive today is using sales from the 2020, 2021 year. They're always two years behind. So, it's at 73%, which we assumed it would be based on the sales ratio we had. We could tell it was going to be 73%. We, in turn, have to declare a city ratio, a municipal ratio, and it has to be within 10% up or down of that 73%. So, we're looking at, what, 66 to 80 at this point in time. Now, that 73 doesn't take into consideration the adjustments that we made on single families last year, which boosted that ratio. So, now, we have to go back, use those numbers again, redo that 73% ratio, and see where we stand, make the adjustments to the multi-units. That's going to increase that ratio as well. We may end up somewhere in the mid-80s, hopefully, and that will push us with a 10% to 90, low 90s. Whether we can hold that 93, that frankly would probably be a miracle. It really would, I have to say it. But we'll see. We have a lot of work to do. We've got to run those numbers all over again and add in those adjustments that were made.
One more question. The categories, have you exhausted all the categories in terms of the market?
We have not touched.
Like industrial, is that a separate?
We have not touched commercial, industrial, because they are above any of these, above the waterfront, above the single-family, above the multifamily. So, they are higher. Their ratio is higher than all of them. So, we have not touched them.
Is there anything we're missing? Is there any category that we haven't talked about?
Well, I mean, you can really parse out the commercial industrials. You can fine-tune them by retail, by, you know, industrial, by restaurants, by, and they're really all over the place, but they're probably in the mid-90s, generally speaking. So, they're in a good place. They're pretty stable. Another difference between kind of the residential and everything else is that we have so many residential sales that we have such a good daily sample that we can really fine-tune. In commercial industrial, you might have one sale of a particular type of property, and it's kind of hard to know for sure, but that's the age-old problem. That's always been the case. But, you know, the sales we do have really support where they're at.
Yeah, no, one.
Okay. I'm going to ask, and I'd like to take some time. Looking at our schedule here, we have an executive session, which is not going to be that long, but I'd like to just take a couple, huh? Okay, good. I just want to take some time and, you know, Karen and Joe stay there, but have some internal dialogue on some of the problems that this is presenting, some of the solutions that we can take as a city council. One question, though. In your experience, in your professional experience, working with your peers, what is the most common course of action on a go-forward? I mean, this has been a very turbulent couple of years. We do understand that Auburn has now been recognized as a desirable place to live for a lot of different reasons. Our supply is limited, demand is outstripping supply. What, communities like ours that have experienced this, what are the, some of the next steps they take?
A lot of them are doing revales.
The next step to bring us back up to just value, is that what you mean?
Correct. Other than just reevaluation of everything up to 100%, is there any other steps that they're taking? Is there anything they're looking at?
They, like Joe just said, there are tremendous amount of municipalities that are doing full revaluations of the entire city. And frankly, that's really the only way you're going to get all of the classes back up to where they should be at market value, is to do a full citywide for every property in the city. You do the land, you do the commercial, industrial, you do, personal property must be included. And if that's a road that you want to take, we also know that there are very few companies that have the capability to come in and do a revaluation to a city this size. I know that when Lewiston put out their RFP for a revaluation, because they are in the process of doing one, they only received two bids back, two companies. And they were out, they're out four years. So, if... So if... We can put Band-Aids on, but the only thing a Band-Aid does, and I consider this a Band-Aid, and the only thing a Band-Aid does is it's going to eventually create inequity, and you can't fix it until you do a revaluation.
At last year, when you revalued the single families, afterwards, you guys went out and had several meetings with the public?
Quite a few, yeah.
Quite a few.
Yeah.
Can we do that before? Can, once you decide, we're going to know April 1st, it's done. Well, the sale...
The sales are in.
You're not taking any more information in at that point from sales. It's going to be, and you're going to then evaluate what you're going to do.
Right.
Before it happens, can you go out and do what you did after, before it happened, so that we can educate folks on... Because they think we're raising everybody's taxes.
Yeah.
And explain to them how it works. Like, how does a ratio work? Most people don't, me included, you know, explain how that works. It's your value of your house, if you sold it in the market versus what it's assessing. That's the ratio, right? If it's worth $100,000 in the market and you're being assessed at $70,000, that's a 70% ratio.
That's correct.
Right.
So people need to understand that, and citizens need to be explained to, you know, educated.
Yep. We did make that a big part of our presentations for the single family. We tried to, and like you said, for some, it's very difficult to understand ratio and how they are derived and classes and differences between the classes. It's complicated, but we're more than happy to do it. If we did it prior to April 1st, we can generalize and give them general information. We certainly wouldn't be able to get into any numbers with them because we don't have them.
Well, when we sent out the notice, what the new number was going to be last year, off the top of my head, but I think it was June or July that we released it.
Yes.
I'm talking before we release it, even if it's come in and talk workshop with the council, have some messaging prior to it coming out, and then letting everybody know that we'll also talk after. Like, it seemed like it came to the council, and then we let it go, and then that was it. Whereas opposed to when we know beforehand, let's...
Yeah.
Message that before the, you know, before everything happens. That's my request.
We would...
I invite you here...
Yeah.
To do it as much as possible.
We would love to.
Yeah.
Although, and again, like Karen said, we really don't know right up until, you know, we do commitment, because there are so many variables being, you know, what, when I say we're not going to know, we're not going to know what their taxes are going to change. And again, we're talking about a smaller segment here. The budget's a factor, you know, in people's taxes. Single families should be unaffected by what we do. I mean, the best-case scenario was that single family goes down a little bit, although I think the scope of this really would be negligible. You're not going to see much of a change of anything. So yes, I mean, we absolutely want to connect with those who will listen to us, because we like to talk about ratios. So it's something that, you know, yeah, we would have... And, you know, ratios are kind of unique to the assessing world, too. I was appraiser, a fee appraiser for years before this. I had no idea what a ratio was before I came to do assessing work, because it's not something you do. It's unique to assessing, and taxpayers, I guess. So yes, we would love to.
And just to put a little information out there, of course, when you have a single-family home, 99% of them are owner-occupied. I mean, right? So we have these multi-units in the city, and we ran a few numbers, and the 1 to 4s that we have out there, they're about 55% owner-occupied. So, you know, and then the 5 and up were less than 1% are owner-occupied. So those are investment buildings. So we don't have to reach the volume of people, owners, homeowners. I mean, I understand that investment owners are still going to want to know, why did my taxes go up? And like the mayor said, it's going to get passed off to their tenants. But just to put it out there, it's just 55% owner-occupied.
Okay, so let's bring this in a little bit. Oh, sorry, blended in, so you got to raise your hand a little higher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know you two and your office is very good at what you're doing, but I am afraid of a revaluation, even though I know we need to do one because of those inflated sale prices across the board on a different properties. Because when people come in and they see a house that they really want, and there's maybe multiple bidders, they'll try to outbid their competition to get what they really want. So that's going to inflate the value. And so when you assess them across the board, even though I didn't sell my place, my property's going to be valued higher, which it's great if I someday want to sell the house, but if I'm on a fixed income or working two jobs, you guys, I don't mean, I don't mean you guys are trying to do it, because it's just the way the numbers are. You might assess me so that I can't keep my property. That's what I'm afraid of.
Hold on, let's, one thing, if I could. We're not talking about a citywide reevaluation at this time or this year unless someone in the council wants to bring it up. And, Mr. Manager, I look to you. Is that on, is that a recommendation from staff at this time? It's not? Okay.
Can I just make a... Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to ask if you would recommend setting up a revaluation, knowing that we can't do it right away based on Lewiston's experience where they're four years out? Because we may want to just get in line. It sounds like there's a shortage of people who can do these major revaluations.
Okay, a couple of comments. I was here for the last revaluation, and I just want to say that, yes, values could double, could triple on some of these homes and properties that we have in the city. But when that happens, you're bringing in all that extra valuation. You're going to see that mill rate drop. It could drop five, four, five, six dollars, depending on if you tripled all the values in the city. Last time the mill rate dropped substantially, it was over $4, if I remember correctly. Some people saw their taxes go down, some saw them go up, and you had the percentage that stayed almost equal. So when you talk revaluation, it's scary, but it shouldn't be because the mill rate's going to drop. So either way, your taxes are going, someone's taxes are going to go up with or without a revale, because we're going to have to keep making these adjustments. That being said, I just wanted to put that out there. Do I recommend a revaluation? Yes, absolutely. And not tomorrow, but absolutely, to get the city back on track, a full citywide revaluation is the only way to do it. We obviously can't afford it right now. It's going to cost a tremendous amount of money to do a revaluation. It would not surprise me if it hit a million dollars to do it right. But I also think it may be a good idea to put feelers out. Don't do anything formal, but put feelers out and see how far behind these companies are. And if in fact you can't get someone scheduled for another four years, then you absolutely, it would be my recommendation to at least get something going.
The last time we did a valuation and the taxes went up wicked, the city council voted to phase it in over a couple of years.
That's true. We did 2006 and 2007.
Joe, if you could?
Yes.
Anything you can illustrate that? I mean, the mill rate did drop. Your memory is outstanding, by over $4, by about $4. Can you just make that bigger?
Um...
Is it possible? Sure.
On the top?
I think right there, Joe's showing up here, as I can see it, is the, it's mill rates and certified ratios going back to 1970. Rick, you remember that?
See it?
I don't. Just throw that in there. But yeah, you can see the 2007 eval, 2006 that was phased in. You can see the value. You can see obviously how the mill rate dropped. But then, you know, slowly kept creeping back up again. So I get back to the council and think, if you could leave that up, you know, there's a couple of things, you know. Everything we're seeing now and comparatively to other parts of the state and looking at the supply constraints and the demand, I don't think there's anything inflated about any prices right now. I think we're normalizing prices in Auburn to what they probably should have been six, seven, eight years ago. And not just Auburn, probably most of Central Maine, not the coast, but non-coastal parts of the city. And I don't know if you're seeing that as well, if this is more of a normalization or if this is an artificial temporary inflation of price.
We, you know, we get the question a lot, or we get the statement a lot. People are saying, well, the prices are dropping. We haven't seen that yet. And it does appear to be, and even with interest rates rising, we didn't see any precipitous drop in prices. And we've processed sales through November of this year, and they're still high.
Okay, so bringing it back to the council. Council, this goes back, it's a great time to talk about this, obviously it's tax season. And we have to look at really one of three options here. We're going to cut essential services. We're going to increase taxes, or we're going to increase value, which will generate additional tax through new sources. You know, so I'll kick that off and kind of segue back and forth between Karen and Joe's, and thank you for your work on this. It's good data. We have a history here that we can look back at. If you could, what was the mill rate in 1970 before we opened up a little bit?
1970?
Yeah, it was right on the top of your page. It just, it shocked me. Yeah, we were, okay, right there, in the 70s, we're in the 40s with low ratios. So definitely, historically, things changed, and we had those consistent revales to normalize. So just kind of interesting to look at. But open this up. Questions? Start with Joe.
So from my understanding of ratios, and thank you for the explanation, I tend to agree with the mayor. I don't think these prices are inflated. I think it's a bit of a reset. My concern is with industrial and commercial, with the ratio being as high as it is currently, knowing that disparity with residential and multi-units. And it's a cycle, but it's a supply and demand issue, so prices have been very high on residential units, whether they're single or multis. You compound that with a revaluation and where the ratios are currently set, we're going to reset, but we're going to see more of a shift of this property tax burden towards a single-family home and the multis with a full revaluation of the city, looking at the sale prices and understanding that there's been a low volume of transactions at the industrial and commercial and a much lower demand for that. So I understand the need for that, but I see a critical mass of events taking place where homeowners are going to get hit with that equilibrium of ratios across the municipality.
Thoughts, ideas, suggestions, pathways forward?
Well, I think assessing is on the right track as far as trying to balance the different classes. That seems to be probably a requirement of state law and then just good practice on a local level. So I don't think we have much choice on that. On the revaluation thing, I think it's probably so far out there, just based on what you've been saying, that it wouldn't hurt to put the feelers out, knowing, as what Joe says, there's going to be some consequences that we may not like.
One thing you'll see in the CIP plan, as you do, you will see the revale in the CIP plan. I think I put it out as the fifth year, because even if we were to, how contrarian would someone be out that far? But yeah, I think we'll keep monitoring what the, you know, those vendors. I think that, you know, so in the city manager meetings, this is something that's being discussed all the time, as well as obviously in the assessors' meetings, because this is being, every community is looking at this. So, but we'll keep monitoring. But it's in your plan, because I think that we need to make sure it's on the agenda. We're looking at it, and we know that it will be coming up. And I think five years, probably the furthest out you should go with it. But we'll be looking at whether or not that should probably come up within the third year of the plan or not. And I will, a couple of things to highlight, too, just on Phil's comment. A lot of mayors, we're all talking in the mayor's coalition, along with legislatures, and what we're seeing, you can see it there, 2015, 16, 17, whenever Augusta tried to fix a problem at a macro level, it had unintended consequences at the micro level. You know, our representatives there that were serving us supposedly in Augusta actually gave people tax breaks statewide without fully reimbursing us here locally. And it's still going on. And that just has a trickle-down effect. What we're talking currently with legislators and other mayors, what we're seeing is a larger discrepancy happen between the two mains, if you would, larger urban areas, Southern Maine versus Northern Maine. You're seeing a shift. Everybody in Southern Maine has an increase in valuation, and they're losing state subsidies from, for education as well as for rev share. Those subsidies are now being funneled into the less affluent Central, Western, Northern Maine communities. We're actually creating a larger gap. So I do know the legislators are trying to work on that and try to fix those errors. I'm not sure how successful it's going to be, but we're seeing it in education, we're seeing it in rev share, and we're seeing it here. These are penalties for growth. These are penalties, not just for growth, but just for being, you know, so, and location, if you would. So it's something to think about. Is there any last thoughts by anyone or suggestions before we move on to executive session? No? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to keep talking about this situation, along with, you know, how do we gain revenue streams during this budget season? So she'll keep coming back up. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion now for an executive session pursuant to one MRSA, Section 405-16. Do you have a motion?
Two more.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Milk, second by Counselor Moore, and all those in favor. Okay. We're now starting an executive session. Okay, we're now starting executive session.
I'd like to call the order of the City Council Meeting of March 6, 2023. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, folks. Let's see, first on the agenda, we have two consent items. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Councilor Milk, second for Councilor Walker. All those in favor? Okay, approved by a vote of six zero. Before I continue, just for the record, Councilor Dana Staples has an excused absence for tonight. Next, are the minutes of the February 13th, 2023, regular City Council meeting. Are there any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilor Walker, second by Councilor Milks. All those in favor? Passes six zero. Next, are the minutes of the February 17th, 2023, special City Council meeting. Are there any corrections? Numbering, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Councilor Milk, second from Councilor Walker. All those in favor? Passes against, opposed? Okay, passed by a vote of five zero one. Next, on communications, presentations and recognition. I'd like to turn the floor to Mr. Mark Goslin. I was looking for him. Mark couldn't see you. And special communications, this is the 10th anniversary of Norway Savings Bank sponsorship of the Norway Savings Bank Arena.
Thank you very much, Mayor, City Manager, City Council. Always a pleasure to come up and talk to you, especially tonight. Back in 2013, the local hockey community really faced some challenges around like ice time and they ran into some struggles and needed some help and they turned to the City of Auburn to do so. And there was a lot of, you know, private individuals, there's a lot of hard work behind the scenes to figure out that challenge and figure out how we were going to address that challenge here in the City of Auburn. And next thing you know, through some hard work from private individuals as well as local organizations, local businesses, you know, we built the only dual sheet ice facility in the state. And that was back in 2013. You know, and early on in those years with the ice sheet, there was still a lot of questions about what is it, you know, who's going to use it? How are we going to use it? How are we going to run it? How is it going to operate? All these different things happened, right? And you went through the growing pains of having a brand new, state-of-the-art facility. You know, here we are 10 years later, still the only two-sheet ice facility in the state. Also, an icon, an iconic facility in hockey in New England. This facility has become a destination point for a lot of youth hockey, a lot of hockey families, and not just hockey, but people who are proud to come to the facility. We now host the second largest youth hockey program in the state, six local high schools, a high-level junior hockey program. We have a learn-to-play program through our main gladiators. We are now doing private lessons for those individuals who want to learn how to skate, not just skating, but also figure skating. Our public skating numbers are the highest it's ever been. We have highly competitive recreational leagues to co-ed leagues. We've opened the ice, the facility to Paralympians who have come to the facility and it's also turned into an event center. From the very beginning, we started doing stuff in the parking lot. We hosted our first circus. Next thing you know, we were hosting a free concert for our community. We hosted a comic expo. We then also then went to now becoming the home to the main home show as well as the largest RV show in the state, T227. So to say the least, what this facility's done for the community, we're extremely, extremely proud. And sitting to my right is Karen Hackler, Senior Vice President, Senior Vice President of Marketing for Norway Savings Bank. And I want to say thank you to Norway Savings Bank for their continued partnership for the arena. And I'm proud to announce that we get to have them as the naming rights partner to 2033. They're going to renew for another 10 years with us, with the city, and we are extremely grateful. So Karen, thank you very much.
Thanks so much, and thanks for having us here tonight. You know, I look back 10 years ago and I remember standing in the building when it was first being erected in its place and thinking, wow, this is amazing. And at the very same time, we were building our branch out here and just across the street. And, you know, we couldn't think of a better way to connect with the wonderful community here in Auburn, knowing the passion of hockey. I had no idea because we don't have a hockey rink in Norway, but it was just, it was such a nice fit when we were approached. And we're so thankful that we did this because the years that we've spent working with Mark, working with all of you, really has helped us connect with all of you and this community. And, you know, our employees, some of them are here tonight with me just to say how much we've enjoyed being a part of the Norway Savings Bank Arena and your community all these years. Many of them have attended a lot of the games. They've attended public skate nights. We've utilized that mezzanine as a wonderful place to host events like Realtor workshops. What a nice place to have people get out of their normal environments, go to a mezzanine at a cool place like Arena and have workshops. So we've utilized it in that way. Also, all of these events that Mark and his team have put together have been really great draws for our community at large, bringing a lot of these great home shows to, you name it. It's been really, really great. So, yeah, turn it back to you and in our 10-year celebration.
Yes, and that's, that's the exciting part, right? We're, get to celebrate, you know, 10 years is special. You get to, you get to create a logo, you get to do something fun, you get to, you know, not, not, not that the Norway Savings Bank Arena logo is iconic. And I think during our conversations in regards to where we've been is people call the arena the Norway Savings Bank Arena. They just don't call it by anything else. And, and that's when you've done something right and you've created something very special. So, right now, tonight, we're going to unveil our new 10th anniversary logo, which is right there, using some hockey sticks, using the letter X, commemorating 2013 to 23. And we are going to plan special events over this next year in regards to focusing on the 10 years and really just celebrating what that building is and what it means to the community. We have some news, hopefully, that we're going to be sharing here in the next, you know, few months about some different things that are going to be coming to the facility. And it's exciting to see where it's going and exciting, the past and what we've built is helping us build a better future with the, with the facility. We know we're doing something good and we can't do it without a great partner like Norway Savings Bank, so thank you. But we also have something else to share, so I'll let Karen kick that off.
So as we were talking about the next 10, 10 years and we were asking ourselves, how can we better connect with the community at large? We said, you know what? What better way than a mascot, bringing a real-life character, live, breathing character to life? As you know, they create a spectacle wherever they go. They are something that people look forward to seeing. And so we have for you a video that we're going to show you to introduce our mascot.
Yes, and we'll run it up on the screen there.
So with that, I'd like to introduce you to Barnaby, who will be connecting you with our community going forward.
Oh, thank you very much, Barnaby. Appreciate it. And Karen's right. I mean, having a mascot and having someone like this representing the community, someone we're going to be able to have at public skates, do something with our youth, but also it's a great way to, again, to showcase the relationship between the bank and the arena. And we're proud to have the newest member of the family, Barnaby.
Barnaby, welcome. And if you could, just kind of celebrate this, if you could, to the honors of wrapping the gavel. If he's qualified to be mayor, there's an election in November.
Mayor, do you mind a quick picture?
Let's do some pictures and while you're all coming, your team's coming up here, love to have the council, excuse me, get a picture, but also behalf of the City Council, the entire city of Auburn, this, your Norway Savings Bank Arena and what that investment into our community has made for a difference in Auburn is, it's unspeakable truly. People from around New England know Auburn because they've come here for that arena. They have had a chance to experience our people, our industry, our business, our city in a very positive way. And Auburn's recent success over the last few years is really, can be attributed directly back in no small part to the arena itself, the staff that we have, the focus, the dedication and contributions. Now this, I honestly don't know what's going to happen with Auburn now that we have a mascot. This is going to, we're going to have to rework Council or entire business plan going forward on this one. So thank you very much again, and, you know, we really appreciate, truly appreciate everything you've done to bring a culture of sport to the City of Auburn. So thank you again. All right, everyone this way. One, two, three. Thank you very much. Mark, Mark, did you, did you want any more photos of the mascot right here? Did you, while we have a minute? Yeah, I do. I do, oh my God, I almost forgot. Yeah, it is. I think former councillor. This is no small undertaking, that's for sure. Okay, folks, thank you very much. We'll get back to communications at this point. Council Communication. We're going to start off over here to the right. Council Gary, is there anything that needs to be communicated to or about the community at this time? Clear?
I have missed the wonderful skiing at Auburn Nordic Ski Association. They have the most snow they've had in three or four years. I've had COVID, so, but I'll be back and it's great. They got enough snow to last till probably April.
Hey, do you have a lot of snow? Nothing on my end. Oh, other than, I'd just like to let you everybody know again that we do have great response to the Auburn Lobster Festival. This is on May 6th at Festival Plaza, starting at noon. We have a huge lineup of food trucks that's ever increasing, local vendors, great bands that have been released, bands from Nashville, Tennessee, including Maine's own Scoach, which is always a crowd favorite. But there will be a lot more events, obviously lobsters, lobster races and so forth in the river. So please keep going to theauburnlobsterfestival.com for more information. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Council, just.
Just a few items, one item actually that I wanted to speak on. Many of you may have seen the article in the paper today regarding LOPCA and not just LOPCA, but BioSolids, State of Maine impacts that's having on communities. I just want to share a couple of highlights. I asked Travis Peaslee, who's the Director of our LOPCA, to just provide me some information on where we are as a community as it pertains to our BioSolids. So Travis shared that there were two significant legislative bills that had been passed in 2022 that are impacting our current situation. One of those was LD 1911. That bill was introduced to update the PFAS screening standards and changing the enforcement relating to that. The second bill was LD 1639, and that bill targeted a restricting material that's eligible for disposal in Maine for in-state waste. Part of the issues there had to do with demolition, demolition debris, bulky waste that was coming from out of state coming into the state of Maine. If you read the article today, you saw that Casella spoke about the fact that they don't have that, they no longer have access to the quantity of bulky waste to help with the mixing of our BioSolids. So that's having an impact. The reason why I want to make sure I bring this to the public's attention because the article didn't highlight exactly on our recent actions that we have taken. So a couple of things that have taken place within LOPCA is, one, they have slowed our process a bit and we are currently stockpiling as much as we can. One thing that we're fortunate of, we have the ability to stockpile more than any other waste facility has because of some of the work that has been done over the years at LOPCA. But that stockpiling will allow us for about three, three weeks or so to really determine whether or not do we accept Casella, who is providing the transportation, the acceptance of our BioSolids and the transportation of that at landfill, whether or not we'll accept that offer. So that is being looked at now. We are working through having conversations with DEP, the Governor's Office as it pertains to our BioSolids, the impact that that will have for us within the City of Auburn. There are local legislators that are looking to move forward with emergency bill to help address that as well. And we're exploring other options, meeting other locations that our BioSolids could be hauled to. So there's several things that are happening that we're being, that are being looked at. I thought one thing that was important as a positive note that Travis shared was the work that has been done over the years is certainly putting us in a much better position. One is that in 2012, we produced 24,000 yards or 18,767 tons of BioSolid material. Over the past 10 years, between the digestion system, the Cascade Auburn fiber being coming offline, that was a huge impact on our BioSolids over the years. And then also the new dewatering equipment that the investments have made, we're now down to, from the have made, we're now down to, from the 18,000 tons, we're down to 7,000 tons in 2022. That's a 67% decrease in our Bio Solids. Those are all great efforts. Those are investments that the communities have made, Lewiston and Auburn, over the years that have helped us regarding that. If we were still producing the same amount of tons currently with the anticipated increase in costs, we're looking at some of our costs going between $130 to $192 a ton. Those are huge impacts for us. If we were processing the same amount of tons, we'd be looking at close to $3 million a year to dispose of those Bio Solids. Currently, we're, we're looking, because of our reduction in, in tons and our yards rather over this time, we're at about 1.2 million. So, those are still, we're still looking at closer about a $300,000 increase in just our Bio Solids if this moves forward without any further action taking place based on what the proposed costs are coming in at. So, I just want the council and the public to know that we're working on this. We're having conversations on a regular basis. I've been in contact with Maine Municipal Association's legislative staff about our communications with, with our legislators regarding this. They are working alongside them. We are hoping to see some emergency legislation that will be introduced that will certainly help offset this to our ratepayers. That's really the most essential component. Although there is, we're limited. We're limited on the, where we can dispose of these solids here in the state of Maine, and that makes it very challenging for us. But I know that we're continuing to work through that, but that's, we'll have more updates in the future.
Thank you very much. Okay, Councillor Walker, did you have anything? Okay, very good. We're gonna move on to the first open session of the night. Any member of the public that would like to speak about any topic that's not on tonight's agenda, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address. If you could, limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, I'll close it. Oh. Don't be so polite there, Dave. Just come right on up, quick.
I was letting somebody else go first. I'm Dave Grissold. I'm at 199 Gimmage Avenue. I'm here tonight in my capacity as chair of the Community Forest Working Group of the SNRB. The SNRB ordinance encourages the working groups to report to the council periodically. So, I wanted to give you a quick version of what we accomplished last year and some of the things that we plan to do this year. Last year, probably a highlight of our year was qualifying as for our 20th year of Tree City USA status. We'll be recognized for that during Arbor Week, probably in Augusta in May. And we're also in the process of developing a grant application to Project Canopy to plant 10 trees, hopefully with some commemorative signage around the city. That probably happened later in the summer or the fall. We're trying to focus on high visibility, high traffic parks and schools. We'd like to put one down at Festival Plaza with a suitable sign. We haven't determined the locations yet, but if you folks have ideas of where you'd like to see a Tree City USA tree, let us know and we'll try to get it into the plan. As you know, last year, we also developed the Street Tree Sustainability Ordinance that you folks were nice enough to pass for us. TD Bank planted 36 trees over in New Auburn. We participated in that. We hosted a webinar by Allison Canoti, Maine State Animalologist, on brown-tail moth in February. And it's a good time to remind everybody that this is, over the next several weeks, is the best time to clip brown-tail moth nests out of trees. That was part of the focus of that webinar. We worked on, with Bates students on a number of projects last year. We started working on a notable trees of Lewiston, Auburn. We had some Bates student survey a variety of invasive species, a pen gill and the riverwalk. And this fall, we had a couple Bates students do a super job on surveying some neighborhoods for bittersweet. And they developed with some of our guidance a presentation to help homeowners control that bittersweet if they begin to see in the yard. So, we're hoping to do something like that in, in June. The other big issue that we dealt with, again, an invasive species, emerald ashbore. The group established and monitored two emerald ashbore traps in town last year for the second year, and we didn't find any bugs, but they're coming closer. Those are the main highlights. We've got a new member, Jeremy LaVertu, who will be, he's the Bates arborist, and he's going to be joining us officially as soon as we can convene the SNRB to do the job. The other thing that I saw this week is that Bowden College is in the process of jumping through the hoops to become a tree campus, which is the college equivalent of Tree City USA. And his alumnus, I've reached out to them, and maybe we can have some exchanges of information and ideas and get Auburn some positive publicity at the college. So, thank you.
Dave, thanks for all your work over the years. Greatly, and, oh. Is that a version? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Anybody else in the public that would like to speak? If not, I'll close the first public session. We do not have any unfinished, unfinished business tonight. We do have some new business. Next is order 2603062023 authorizing, excuse me, the marketing of city-owned property at 121 Mill Street, parcel ID 221-041. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion from Councillor Walker, second from Councillor Hawes. Open this up. Everything's in your packet, too, folks. We're gonna have three of these properties back to back. Open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment about 121 Mill Street? This is just an order for the marketing of, not the final, the sale of the property. Council, debate? None being asked for a vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Whiting?
I am in favor of marketing all these, three of these properties, and I'm excited by the 121 Mill Street that we actually took control of it so that we could determine what would happen with it. What I would like to recommend is an amendment to the order that would call for, after the statement that the city will review all proposals under the review and selection process, add language and consider comments from neighborhood advisory committees for the Lake Street and Mill Street properties. I don't think it's necessary for Rodman Road because it's very commercial, but I think it would be nice to have advisory committees that review developer proposals and just give their opinion to the city council.
I don't have a motion yet on this one.
That is a motion?
For the Mill Street property. Mill, just for right now, because that's the only one, okay? For Mill Street. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to paraphrase this and get this back so I have this motion correct for the record, okay, and for the council. You want to make a motion under the order, which is order 2603062023, a motion to add language that all RFPs will be reviewed or offers will be reviewed by a citizens committee?
Yes, basically the, the Mill Street and Lake Street properties, consider comments from neighborhood advisory committees that, you know, either the city council or the mayor would appoint.
You just said that the council or mayor would appoint. So, you're talking about creation?
I'm sorry. Yes. Well, I just leave it to the mayor. I think we just, we want neighborhood participation to comment on, on these properties, to get input. I don't want to, you know, I just, I don't want to delay the process. I just would like to see neighborhood input.
Okay, so, I'm just wanting to clarify. By the Economic Development Department, motion to amend, adding a sentence saying that all offers will be reviewed and recommendations given by a neighborhood committee formed by the mayor. That's the motion on the floor. Do I have a second? None, I have a second?
Point of information. When you talk about a committee, is it going to be a closed committee by, with the mayor choosing the people? Or is it going to be like meetings where neighborhoods come? I'm asking a point of information.
Yep, that's for point of information, but we do need a second in order to even have those conversations.
I'll second it.
I have a second from Councillor Gary. Now, we have a point of information. A Councillor Whiting on this?
Yeah, my, my concept is not to delay the process, not to gum up the works, just simply to have some citizen input. I mean, we have Councillor Hawes that lives right around the corner from Lake Street School. We have at least two architects, possibly three, that live within like a couple of blocks. One of those architects at least could be on the committee and just get ideas from the neighborhood about what they'd like to see. Not to stop anybody from developing the property, just to give their comments on what, you know, Ryan has, Councillor Hawes has expressed, you know, concerns about the, the playground, for example. And so, and Mill Street, it's a, you know, it's a sensitive neighborhood with, you know, elderly housing, Goodman Wiping Cloth, a lot of multifamily units as well, kind of mixed-use neighborhood. You know, could just have a meeting or two to discuss, you know, what's being proposed.
Is there any question, Councillor Gary?
Yes, thank you.
The only thing, I, I, I'm gonna comment with an opinion because the motion was for the mayor to form it. I think it's a great idea. I do wonder, though, is if, does a circumvent, you're talking about planning, and does a circumvent the process of the planning board, A, you know, that's part of the planning process, it's covered under zones. And I just have those questions. Again, I'm not opposed or supportive. Whatever the council decides, I'll execute. Mr. Manager?
Mayor, I would just suggest that the, when we take a look at these responses, I think that we'll make sure staff vets them regarding how they apply to zones, make sure that it is within the necessary parameters, and then, then bring it to the committee, for the committee then to look at those RFPs with that already completed by staff review.
I think that's the process. Okay. Is there any other comments on this, on this motion to amend?
I like the idea, too. My only, it was a good concept, but I think the city manager laid out what the execution of that would look like.
Any other comments? I'll call for a vote on the motion to amend. All those in favor of the amended motion by Councillor Whiting, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Passes 3-2. I got this just for Mill Street. Okay, now we have the original motion as amended that's on the floor at this point. It was addition or prerequisite of the second? 4-2, I apologize. Okay, so we're back down to the original motion as amended. Any other comments on this? None being asked for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Passes 6-0 as amended. Is that right, Sue? Thank you. Next, order 2703062023, authorizing the marketing of city-owned property at 80 Lake Street, parcel ID 239-114. Do I have a motion? Got a motion from Councillor Gary. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councillor Moore. Open this up to the public for comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak about the marketing of 80 Lake? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the same amendment with the clarifying language aptly provided by our city manager, who's more articulate than I am.
Okay, so I'd like to, I got a motion on the floor. I'm gonna repeat it again. Again, Sue will correct me if I'm wrong, that will add, make a motion to amend this order that will have all offers post-screening by city staff, screened by an ad hoc committee formulated by the mayor before coming back up to council for final decision. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second for Councillor Gary. All those in favor of the motion to amend? All those opposed? Passes 4-2. That's the amendment. Back to the original motion. Any comments on the original motion as amended? None being asked for a vote.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to also make sure there's an amendment, additional amendment to say that whatever development RFP is accepted, that whatever is going to have to fit the character of the neighborhood.
That's actually, well, there, if you're gonna make a motion on that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna counsel that that is referenced in a different way, further in your packet as one of the descriptors, one of the conditions of sale. If you look forward, it's already there. The character of the neighborhood terminology won't be applicable after July 1st with the implementation of LD 2003. We have to be careful in how we use this going forward as a council. That's a state law.
I'll withdraw my motion as long as the neighborhood is protected.
So, the original order is on the floor. Any other comments? Debate? None being, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor of passing the order as amended? Opposed? None being? Passes 6-0. Next is order 2703062023, authorizing the marketing of city-owned property at Rodman Road, parcel ID 198-036. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Councillor Moore, and a second from Councillor Whiting. Open this up to the public for comment. Any members of the public that would like to speak about the Rodman Road marketing? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Council? I will make a recommendation, if I could, specifically to Councillor Whiting. Councillor Whiting, what you're doing with your previous motions on your orders is setting precedent within the city. Not saying it's right, not saying it's wrong, but I do believe that any type of precedence should be universally applied regardless of location of land. There are people that live near here, and I do think that in order to have, have fair and equal application of the law and procedures, this precedent, if to go forward, should apply, at least to all orders within this council meeting.
No, I, in, in thinking about that site, even though it's predominantly commercial, it's in a mixed zone which has a lot of residential. And so, those people, Joe knows this, those people have had conflicts with commercial uses, industrial uses, and so we should apply the same thinking. That's, that's a good thought. So, I would move to amend as we did with the previous two.
I'll second it.
A motion to amend by Councillor Whiting, too, same language as previous, and second by Councillor Gary. Any comment, questions? We'll say that, you know, when we're looking at this, we'll probably look at the distribution of Auburn as we just learned in the workshop earlier, that Auburn is not just made up of residences, but of all different taxpayer, takes paying classes, categories. And if there is going to be an ad hoc, it will be one ad hoc for all three properties, okay? So, a small ad hoc, we'll look at the formulation. I'll actually work with you, Councillor Whiting, if I could, on the formulation of that ad hoc committee, because it is your concept, okay? Any other questions? None being asked for a vote on the motion as amended. All those in favor? I'm sorry, did we vote on the motion? Oh, the amendment, I'm sorry. First of all, a vote on the amendment to the motion. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Opposed? Okay, passes 4-2. Now, with, we have a motion on the floor that is amended. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? None being, I'll bring it back to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as amended, please raise your hand. Passes 6-0. Okay, next is a public hearing for the Stable Ridge Tiff District. There will be no action on this item tonight. It is just a public hearing. I'll open this up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? And, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Before that, Mr. Holmes, just because this doesn't happen often, I'd like Mr. Holmes from staff to go ahead and explain what a tiff is.
Sure. So, first of all, the tiff we're discussing tonight is for the Stable Ridge property. And this public hearing, because I'm not able to count to 10, we're having a public hearing tonight, and we'll have another one on the 20th. And that public hearing will be the one that will be the one preceding the vote. So, because it was publicly noticed, I want to make sure I was here to answer questions or take any information. So, this particular tax, financing district is a single property. When we looked at the area, we didn't see anything that was near there that looked like it would be dramatically changed over the next few years. And when we set a tiff district up, we'd like to make sure we capture all possible value. So, if it takes five or six years before the next thing might be done, I would hate to lose that timeframe on a tax financing district. This does have language that addresses a credit enhancement agreement. Based on the conversations I've had with the council, this is basically set as the maximum term, maximum percentage, and maximum capture back to a developer. But in no way are we actually approving a credit enhancement agreement with the developer. Developer has not been offered or promised anything to this point. There would be a discussion. We put it in there because there were some extraordinary it in there because there were some extraordinary expenses that we felt may qualify, but that's a decision that would come down the road. And we, for timing purposes, we had to get that done now. So there was no current credit enhancement attached to this TIF. Any questions I can answer in regard to the process?
So to summarize, a TIF is a shelter of the value to protect the city's coffers from decreasing state aid and county tax.
And county tax as well as the school fund.
It is not a refund of tax dollars to the property owner.
Correct. The only way the property owner ever receives any tax refund on this, and they always have to pay their taxes first. So just to be clear, they pay their taxes, and then if there's a credit enhancement agreement, that is when they can get some of that money back. But a TIF is not money back guaranteed to a property owner or developer at all. It has to be a separate document that's approved.
And do we have the percentage of funds in the TIF account where they can go, the allowed usage of? I know it's, there's multiple different things.
So if you look at the project list, in the current, in the, in the proposed TIF, there is $120,000 for administration and professional service costs, basically to pay the lawyers for what they've done for the work. Economic development programs, $20,000, which would also help pay for economic development personnel salaries. Road improvements, $3 million, which would include anything from widening roads, sidewalks.
I mean, this is all of our TIF accounts right now in, in this.
This is, I'm, I'm talking about this specific one, but they're all very similar.
Over the course of 20 years. Okay.
Right. Yep. And then the last one is the 15% of the TIF funds would go towards the public safety. So therefore, the public safety building we're continuing to work for, and that's projected about $250,000 over the life.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Holmes? Counselor? Counselor, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Holmes, are we going to offer the same type of deal to any other developer that will develop these type of apartments?
What deal?
In other words, create a TIF district for different ones of projects of the same type size.
So I would tell you that I would recommend to the city council to TIF any development like this, and this is not offering anything to the developer. This is about us taking that and then using those funds that are brought in from that TIF district to do the improvements to the roads and the safety and those things in those neighborhoods. And that's what allows us to really focus that into that area, because when we do this, we have to really work with the state and put down what areas we're going to be looking to do and what projects we're going to be looking to do. And they all must have some way to tie back to what that project creates.
And I think that's an important point. And the history of this has formed, correct me if I'm wrong, in the 90s with then-Governor Angus King, who basically created a TIF program with the legislature as a way to shelter and increase investment. You are captive 5% of your total valuation as a city to be within this TIF district. We are at one and a half, one and a quarter?
Yeah, if that.
Most municipalities, in order to maximize their return on investment from the state, shelter as close to 5% of their total valuation as possible. Over the course of the years with new developments, we have not TIF'd as much as we should. We have not sheltered as enough of our money as we probably should have, which has cost the taxpayers. I think any type of program that we have, or any type of development going forward, we should try to endeavor to TIF in order to shelter as much tax revenue as possible. So, I mean, good question, but I want to make sure it's not a deal to the developer. It's just a...
A deal for us.
Deal for us. Okay, it's a tool for us. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I think probably the best way to state this is that for a TIF district, what we're creating right now with the TIF district, the developer has no involvement in this process at all. This is all done, city and the state of Maine. That's, that's the only thing that's being done now. Under a credit enhancement, that's where the discussions now kick in with the developer, if that was to take place. However, this is just between the city and the state.
So this is a, we don't have a motion on the floor. Obviously, we're not going to debate this. That will come next meeting. But right now, we do have a public hearing. So if there's nothing else from Mr. Holmes, you don't run away. Yeah, you're not, you're not... Is there any other questions? Now we're going to open this up to the public for comment. None being, okay, this is a public hearing. I'd like to open it up to the public. Please step up to the podium, give us your name and address, and let me your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. Andy Titus, 24 Rubelite Lane. Just one pointed question, because you just mentioned 250,000 for public safety, but the TIF is good for 5 million over 10, 20 years? As I understood it, and actually even with this so-called credit enhancement portion of it or whatever, we were still talking about $3 million, and 15% of either one of those is a lot more than 250,000. So I don't know where that number came from, but don't have to answer that necessarily. But I just want to talk about TIFs in general because I'm not a great fan of TIFs, but I know they have their place. And I remember we've done some TIFs in the past where we had to build road or infrastructure, and we used a portion of the value to do that. And the idea was that, of course, that 40% hit, and that does happen with the county taxes and federal, state revenue sharing and aid to education. It does happen. But we also found that whenever we TIF money, we restrict its use. So now this money can be used for the general area around Court Street, but it doesn't do anything to help the taxpayer in the bottom line. It does over time, yes, when you start adding up some of the extra benefits, but it doesn't, the money, we are very restricted in using it. So I've always felt that we're better off taking the 60% money that we can use as we see fit than taking the 100% of the money that, that we have to restrict it. And in this case, we're talking about 100% TIF. And I think the reason why it's worded that way is because there was a 50% credit enhancement in the paperwork, in the packet that's proposed, which means you're going to have to give some of this money away, so you want to have some of it for road improvements. And that may be why you're going to 100%. But I still think that that's not the way to go. I don't believe in the credit enhancement at all, so if that's on the, on the table for debate, my objection is we should not be doing that for a developer, especially this late in the game. So with that in mind, we should TIF a percentage that we need to fix Court Street to make it better, and I understand doing that. So it should only be maybe a 50% TIF for that reason, and the rest of it should be available for the general fund. Now you say, what do we do when we lose money? The, obviously, the school is looking at a $1.5 million deficit this year because of growth. We've been told growth helps us.
I'm sorry, what? I'm, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry to interrupt.
I think I saw that that was something like 1.5 million that they may be losing in state aid to education because of our valuation growth. But what we should be doing is looking at that as we're growing and put money away and aside, knowing that we're only going to get 60% of that growth. 40% is going to have to go to the losses that we get from the growth. We can still do a lot with the 60, but if we pre-spend it, now we're in trouble. So my proposal is that we look carefully at TIF districts, no 100% at all, but also think about that 40% that we're going to lose in our growth and be ready for it. So it's not going to be a shocker when the school department says, we got to add to your tax levy a 1.5 million, because we grew. And that's being a punishment for growing. It's not right, but we need to prepare for it. And TIF districts have a tendency to hide that. So I really am against 100% TIFs, and only TIFs when they're necessary for the improvements based upon the project. Thanks.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Hey, council, just so you know, I have a budget message from the superintendent. The decrease in revenue was because of a lack of student population. Okay, so I'll go over that in more detail.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Harmon. I live at 34 Vista Drive. I'm not here to comment specifically on the creation of the TIF tonight, but rather, the credit enhancement agreement that's baked in.
Sir, this is, this is a public hearing on the TIF.
Yes, and within the paperwork that is before the council, it authorizes and expects a credit enhancement agreement with the developer to be effectuated. And that credit enhancement agreement would give a $500,000 rebate of the taxes paid by Stable Ridge back to them. So, we were in front of the planning board a few weeks ago, and city staff was asked about the relationship between the tax revenue generated and the service costs for development like Stable Ridge. And their answer was, there's no studies in Auburn, there's no data in Auburn to show that it's going to take in more revenue than the expenses, or conversely, that the expenses will exceed it. So where are we? We have an assumption that the tax revenue that's going to be generated will cover their services. So if we kick back $500,000 in this credit enhancement agreement to this developer, the rest of the taxpayers in the city of Auburn are going to have to come up with $500,000 in this period to cover that. We also had at that same meeting, the developer telling the planning board, when they were talking about expanding their development, that they spent more money, it was much more difficult, and it was more costly to develop this lot than they thought. So in effect, what we're really saying here is, we're going to use a credit enhancement agreement to kick back $500,000 to the developer, because they're disappointed that their profits aren't going to be as high as they thought they were. So I would say that if you want to create a TIF and, and steer money towards Court Street and those improvements, great. But you should not be including a credit enhancement agreement to kick back $500,000 to a private developer because they don't think they're making enough profit. Thank you.
Good evening. Bob Hayes, 172 Allen Avenue. I just find it interesting, just kind of looking back over the years, how TIFs have evolved, both locally as well as at the state level. You know, looking back to the late 1980s, we got into TIFs, and through, up until about 2010 or so, there were 15 TIFs, all were commercial. In 2012, I think it was a period of Webster School being remodeled for apartments. So in the last decade, suddenly we've gone from commercial, and we have swung to TIF-ing residential. And a lot of it is necessary, but just looking at the, the TIFs that we have had since, say, Webster, I think it's six of 11 have been on the residential side. And those have been primarily, well, Spring Street, Hampshire Street, 555, or not 555, 477 Minut Avenue, mostly for affordable housing. And again, a lot of those being within the downtown where we do want, we do have the walkability, the connectivity, we do have the, build our population that's supporting the downtown. I think we have to be careful with a project that's before us and it's being considered. I think this credit enhancement is the key. You know, we do want residential development. I think there's been a real effort to build our tax base residentially as opposed to commercial, which was always considered the better approach in the past. So I agree that right now, and I guess the other part of this, it seems in the past, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong, but most projects were being developed the developer, but at the same time, the city was considering, you know, the ideas of TIFs. I go back to George Shaw developing the mall area. It was recognized, he could not build what he wanted to do without the infrastructure there. He actually, upon himself, invested in the infrastructure, and that's why we used the TIF, because we recognized he was putting in the infrastructure for what he needed, but also for the future of other developers. So there's a real basis for TIFs, and I agree with him. But I think we've got to be very careful with respect to residential, and I think very careful with respect to this particular, because right now, the optics are not good. If people are realizing that, yes, the city's going to take in a great deal of tax revenue because of 555, but then we're going to give back a half a million dollars to that developer, the optics are not good.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on the public hearing?
Good evening. My name's John Cleveland. I live at 183 Davis Avenue in Auburn. I just start out by saying that I agree with the previous speakers, and I'm going to repeat what they said about the TIF, and particularly the credit enhancement agreement. But I do want to add one other point about the credit enhancement agreement that's important to know. And incidentally, if you look at your appendix in section F, you'll see directly what they allow. The credit enhancement agreement is absolutely, when you vote on it, if you include that in there, it will be passed. Once it's approved by the state, there will be no other requirement for any council action whatsoever. The city manager can proceed to create, and is in fact directed to create, a credit enhancement agreement. The other thing I want to tell you about is that this credit enhancement agreement is transferable. If the current owner decides to sell the property, they, that credit enhancement grows, goes with the new buyer. That means the credit enhancement agreement results in creating a new incentive for the price on which the property can be sold, not related to whatever the current expenses may be. I think it should be always what a seller can sell the property for and what a buyer is willing to purchase, and the credit enhancement agreement should not be included in there to affect what that sale price would be between a willing seller and a willing buyer, because that is public money that's being used to skew what the value of that property would be. Secondly, I want to say that you really ought to think about whether you should be doing 100% TIF here. There are lots of other municipal services, whether it's education, police, fire, emergency services, administration, recreation, the library. All of those things have to be paid for by public money. All of those things to some degree benefit everyone who has property here in the city. The general principle of the rule should be, all property owners should contribute something to those ongoing expenses. You have just heard the challenge you're going to have in potential increase in taxes to folks. I think it's inappropriate to take 100% of that and say, you don't have to contribute to any of those other kinds of services that are provided by the city. In fact, I would suggest maybe you might want to look at a 60% TIF, but you should discuss it. And if you remove the credit enhancement agreement, you'll actually be getting more money in the city coffers for your public purposes, because right now, the most you would get would be 50% for the first 10 years. So if you remove that, you can actually be directing more money and sheltering it, which I agree with. I think that's a good strategy. But I think 100% is unfair to all of the rest of the property taxes.
Thank you very much, sir.
Who are contributing. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this? None being, I'll close this public hearing. Also like to, at this time, have Mr. Glenn Holmes come up. There's a lot of, that's why we had him speak to begin with, to clarify some facts. And please, I think he took some mental notes of this, of what was said, if he could address it.
So just for clarification, and again, I spoke to the attorney this afternoon, just to make sure that I could speak appropriately. So, because this is not an omnibus TIF, which is a whole different type of TIF, the language for the TIF maxims are set into the actual document and do not need to come back to city council. But again, it's the maximum amount. It's, so therefore, yes, the TIF is approved when D, when you vote, and when DECD approves it, then that credit enhancement agreement would be approved, however not executed. And before any dime was to go back to the developer, it would have to be executed by the city manager. And obviously, I used to be a town manager. You don't do a whole lot without your council's good wishes, otherwise you won't be there long. So there's not a concern there. So it could be a 20% for two years, it could be up to 100,000, anything under 500,000, under 10 years, and under 50%. So those are the maximum parameters that that is approved at. We wouldn't have to go back to DEC to get approval to do less than that.
It could be zero.
It could be zero. So it's an unexecuted credit enhancement until that next document is done. And that has not been drafted or asked to be drafted.
Is there any other questions? The council might have had a Mr. Holmes post. There's a lot of, there's a lot of information. We'll clear up the school subsidies. Okay, it wasn't because of increased value. We'll clear that up later. Is there anything else that someone would like to ask for clarification? None being? Okay, Mr. Holmes, thank you. We'll also have this up as an order in our next meeting for any further debate and execution. Okay. We're moving along. Order 29-03062023, amending order 151-11072022, previously adopted by the city council on 11/7/2022, extending the date for the planning board to provide a recommendation on a tax amendment, on a proposed zoning amendment from 3/20/2023 to 4/18/2023. Do I have a motion?
Motion to move.
Council Walker on a motion?
Second.
Second for Council Moran. We'll open this up to the public in a second, but just so remind you all, this is a motion that, an order, excuse me, that we passed directed to council to give us an opinion on the income standard for the agricultural zone as a condition to build a home, as well as a recommendation on the strip limitations within the city. So that said, I'll open this up to the council. Is there anybody in the council that would like to speak on this order? Not council, I'm sorry, the public. Anybody in the public that would like to speak on this? Anybody in the public that would like to speak on this?
Hi, my name's Ryan Smith. I live at 14 Weaver Street. I was in attendance of the last planning board meeting, and I just saw this motion on the agenda when I walked in, and it kind of confuses me. They said they would probably need to the end of the year to decide on this and make an alternative to the income standard. So I guess my biggest question is, why is this just being delayed a month when they said they need the entire year? And I guess the only conclusion I can come to is, we're waiting for a negative recommendation so that the council could then vote through stripping the income standard with no replacement. And I think that's inappropriate, inappropriate governance, and I don't think that's professional, and I don't think that's wanted by the public, by any expert we've consulted, or by the planning board. So that's the only conclusion I can come to, is why we're delaying it one month instead of to the end of the year. But I'd ask the council to vote this down so that we can take the proper public process, and the planning board can make the proper recommendations and send their recommendations to you, instead of giving you the power to, on a negative recommendation, still pass it through as written, stripping the income standard with no replacement. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public like to comment? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Counsel, this amends it to give it, to give the planning board more time? If it's not amended, then their deadline stands at 3/20. Counsel, is there any debate?
Point, sorry, point of information? Did the planning board actually, I haven't gone to the planning board meetings, and I have not watched them, so I'm asking you point blank, so that I know what has been said. Did they come forward and request longer time till the end of the year to come back with their recommendations on these two issues?
So Counsel, the, the date here is 4/18, because you have, the planning board is coming back, they have taken no formal action, as Mr. Ryan Smith mentioned. There was, that was part of the discussions with the planning board members, but there's no formal action. So currently, you have a deadline of 3/20, and the planning board will be meeting beyond that date. So by providing the 4/18, any formal action from the planning board can come back to you without missing this deadline.
But if it's such a short time and they wanted longer, why aren't we giving them more time to discuss it and come back to us with their formed opinions?
What's, what's recommended on here is a procedural change, amendment, based on the original motion for March 20th. It's not to, it's not to discuss whether or not they'll be, they have not taken any formal action, even though a couple of the planning board members discussed it, and there was a good discussion regarding that, if you go back and watch that, regarding things that they would want to see as far as adjustments, what could be considerations for the council, and then how do you implement that? So there was a lot of discussions regarding that. This amendment is for the procedural of the fact that you have a deadline that will not be met, and so this allows you, as the council, to provide that. They can take their formal action and then send it back to you. If their formal action is that they need X amount of time, that would be in that, in that directive that the planning board provides you, that will come back by 4/18.
Well, this brings up an interest, I'm sorry, did you have something further? It brings up an interesting point. I watched some of the, the vast majority of the planning board meeting. Couple of things were popping up too, and I think the council needs to be aware of. And obviously, the only way boards and bodies can communicate with other boards and bodies is through a motion, oral motion, written resolve, order, so forth. That hasn't happened. So, but I will say that there was confusion on the intent of council, which was interesting. And we should think about, as this process is moving forward, on anything that we are providing or asking for with regards to direction to the planning board, that we have representation in the audience or with staff, in order to help clarify the intent of the majority of the, of the council when it took action. I think that will help streamline some things, just a point of information on that. Any other comments on this, on the extension of the date? None being, I'm going to ask for a vote. Good, okay. All those in favor of extending the date to 4/18, 2023, please raise your hand. Opposed? None being, 6-0. Passes. Open this up to the last open session of the night. Any members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue that is not on tonight's agenda? Please, name, address, especially your address. I can't, I can never pronounce your street name.
Rubelite Lane, 24 Rubelite.
Rubelite.
It's a stone that's up in Mount Appetite.
Rubelite.
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 Andy Titus. I just want to speak in open session. We've had two workshops now on spring cleanup, and I've heard a lot of information, and I really do agree with a lot of the pitfalls and problems that we're up against this year. I just wish that we would admit that we can't do it, as opposed to coming up with all kinds... We, the timing is bad. What we should be doing is a program like this in the, in the mid, in next year, in the in-between years, because we have such a buildup right now, and people are going to be marching to that, to main ways for energy, and that place is going to be mobbed, and it's going to be crazy. It's just not going to be organized, it can't be. All of a sudden, you say, April 1st, everybody can truck their stuff. And I've been there on Saturday mornings and sometimes Monday mornings, and that place has a hard time keeping up with the busy times now. I think when we were doing spring cleanup, we moved the stuff across the river, so it never really did reach that area. But now, we're going to have all that stuff reach our, our area in a short time, because people are going to be in a rush to get done. So it's really going to be the worst time to be doing it. I think it'd be a great idea if we said, okay, this is the last spring cleanup. From now on, we're doing this starting April 1st next year, and people can have plenty of time to plan for it. But right now, I really think if we can do it, we should be doing spring cleanup this year. But if we can't, we should just admit, we don't have the people, we don't have the equipment, it just can't happen, we have to do this instead. But we're not, I'm not hearing that. I hear all kinds of excuses and reasons why that we, in the last 20 years, we've been doing it. And the worst one I heard was, well, all every other cities that don't do it, we're the only ones that do. Well, that's a wonderful reason to be an Auburn resident paying taxes, isn't it? Now that, one of those great things, a star in our tax, taxpayers, things that they get is gone. So that's not a good reason to stop it just because nobody else does it. So I just think that we should delay it till next year. That's just my thought, thanks.
Nobody up, I see there's nobody else in the public, so I'll close the second and last open session of the night. Going to go on to reports. Okay, reports. I'll start off, mayor's report. A lot of legislative action happening at the state level. Mayor's Coalition is very active with our lobbyists, and we had a meeting with the governor on Friday, talked about housing, budgets, revenue share. What we're seeing in Auburn right now with regards to a decrease in educational, and that's kind of pivot into my report from the school committee, the decrease in educational rev share is driven by a decrease in students. And this is happening around southern Maine. We've talked about this a long time, we're down about 300 students. I asked staff at the school side to put together a granular report, looking at what would happen to our revenue share and our budget if we filled and right-sized our schools back to the current caring, or potential carrying capacity, without hiring staff or increasing facilities. So we're going to look at that roughly, this 200-student down or deficit we're in this year, that's how many we've lost in the past year, by the way, 200, over 200 students. If we have those students back, our state educational aid would be over $1.1 million without any, any additional costs. I'm not going to go into the complete budget message that the superintendent presented. I will say that we're looking at a bottom-line increase as proposed on the school side of about, hold on, I have it, 60, 64 cents to the mill rate, as proposed. We have meetings to discuss the school budget every Wednesday, and then some on the go-forward until in May, when the city council either passes the recommendation or sends it back unpassed. So we have some time. I'll be talking to the counselors individually about this. We're going to listen to the superintendent very shortly, and we have to figure out some solutions. I will say, though, that she did cut over 23 positions in the school department to reflect the decrease in school age population. Yes, increase in value also, and a decrease in our poverty levels are a factor, but I want to say that again. The decrease in our poverty levels of our students, that's something that we've been trying to achieve for quite a long time. Unfortunately, we are negatively impacted financially when we lift people out of poverty. So this is something that we have to deal with, and we will. So I just want to make sure that, all that, that the truth will come out, and hopefully we can clear up any misconceptions of people using certain facts to further their agenda. That's the mayor's report, legislation, school, every Wednesday going forward. So we'll keep going down, I'll come back to start over here. Counselor Gary, any reports?
None at this time.
Good, good. Mr. Manager?
Nothing further report.
Yep, we don't have any executive session, so at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. I'm going to ask for Counsel, second from Counselor Moore. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? We say adjourned. Thank you all.